That might have been land development regulations.
We would mean it might have been.
I know we were trying to match those up. We didn't agree after we finished the complaint.
No.
Okay. All right, but you know, I think we've heard it in spades tonight. I think it's time we look at the stuff that really matters. The heights, densities, intensities, all that stuff.
Yeah, I think we heard three things from various parties. Number one is, and I like to talk with my hands, I'm from the Northeast. The...
Just don't smack the microphone.
I'll call the, what was being proposed, what we started. Now, this is a continuation, if I understand. I think I have the charts, right, of the, of this, this presentation we had back in November from Kimble Horn on this project and what they're going to do.
Yes.
And this I'll call the, the technical review to keep us in compliance with, with the state requirements.
Absolutely correct.
On this, this hand, we heard, and we have heard tonight from many residents, and we've all received lots of emails on this subject, that, and I think as the mayor just said, and, and it's a, you know, the, the comprehensive plan is a living, breathing document that should always be reviewed. It's like a constitution or whatever, you, you take a look at it and you update it as needed. And the right, we, we were, we've been requested, which is not a bad idea, I think personally, to start looking at the, all the factors that we heard tonight. The, the list of things, the density, the, the future use, et cetera, in light of what's changed in the last seven years. And we do, I think we've all discussed, I, I think personally, our, the, the events in the Southwest, right, what happened in Collier County, Lee County, and, and, you know, are we, we certainly don't want to be in that path. Is there anything we can do with our plans as we go forward to minimize and make sure that we have resilient community? And I think the third thing we heard multiple times is put a planning, pause your planning. Stop now. Stop everything until we finish this hand. I don't have a third hand, right? Until we finish this hand. And to me, I think those are the three things that are on the table.
Well, I think what's on the table is approving what...
Approving what they've done.
There. That's what's on the table.
Yeah.
It brought out subsequent discussions, and I think subsequent discussions, I think our city attorney would have a real opinion on us putting a pause. However, I think in the past, we have always had, and it's just unfortunate people don't get more engaged until, you know, um, you know, until, you know, it, it's just unfortunate that, that, um, you know, maybe the pandemic's just, you know, kind of given everybody more opportunity for pause, or maybe just the fact that, you know, redevelopment is going to happen. Right now, we would, with, with the product we have on the ground, we'd be looking a lot like, you know, the destruct, you know, of, of down in Fort Myers. I mean, we have the pro, the people whose homes and businesses and hotels and condos were doing well were the ones that have been built recently, you know, and so, uh, but I do like the idea. We used to have a future of the city committee. You know, we have a planning board that's made up of residents. We have res, all of our residential boards are really smart, amazing people that have been appointed to serve on that board, and they take their roles fairly seriously. Um, you know, obviously, you know, we can have an additional residential board outside of our library board, our pension boards, or all this other, but we have residential boards. Uh, but if we wanted to have a future of the city board to specifically look at comprehensive plan issues, I would like it to be people who may have at least gone back and watched our planning board meetings when comprehensive plan issues were addressed. It's real easy for us to take the manpower, the staff, the administration, like all the facets that are involved in creating a, a board that's going to be addressing these things. It's not, you know, I mean, it's, it's a significant effort. And, you know, it's like, you know, when we have planning board meetings or historic board meetings or whatever, you hope that the, the appointees have done their homework before they got there, you know, so that they can be a good contributor to it. And I hope that if we have a future of the city, it's not just a board that you get to be a part of, that you expect everybody to hold your hand through it. You know, because to me, you know, understanding the history of a comprehensive plan, why we have it, it started in 1985, you know, when cities were mandated to do so, you know, kind of the history of where we, how we got here, you know, it's pretty much, um, it's a lot. You know, you have to make a commitment, you know, to be a part of solutions, because I haven't seen a solution yet. And so if we're going to come up with a solution, I think it would be absolutely to create that board, but I think it's gonna have to be a commission decision, because it's going to take a lot of money and time on behalf of the city to facilitate those goals. And, and the planning board is gonna put a lot of burden on the planning board, and, but I'm not saying that it shouldn't happen either. I'm just saying that, you know, maybe we do revisit it, but I know what happened, what the comprehensive plan, that how we had, what we had represented the math from, you know, ten years, 15 years ago. You know, the, the resolutions, you know, what's going to come out of this is that, you know, is it ever going to even be economically feasible for any of the, the hotels to redevelop based on today's market values? When I look at our responsibilities on the commission, it's, I look at it as all the property owners. It's all the residents, it's all the tenants, it's all the, you know, the property owners, it's not just the voters. You know, so like, who do you decide who gets, whose opinion wins when it comes to, and so, you know, you kind of keep it all in perspective. But I like the idea of creating a new future of the city, because I think that was a very successful, but it was people who were super dedicated, they weren't, they with, came out with an open mind and open, you know, willing to come up with solutions that were viable, and they, they saw it pass their nose. And that's what I think if we're gonna have that, how do we decide who gets to be a part of that board?
Our committees aren't part of our charter, right?
Yeah.
So, so we can, we can make them or destroy them from this dais right here.
I have a couple suggestions. First of all, whenever we're ready, I'm ready to approve this intended item. But beyond that, our planning board is a residential board, they're all residents, and their main duty is to be looking at the comprehensive plan. We already have that committee. We don't need to have a new committee. They've had five meetings that we heard already on this very topic. I'd kind of like to see how many people attended those meetings. So we already have the structure in place. I don't think we need to have another committee. I think maybe what's confusing is the, the planning board used to be called the future of the city board.
Oh.
Yeah, so that's where, and it got changed to the planning board, because that's a much more common name for it. They're planning boards, they look at planning, that's what the comprehensive plan is.
That's why we keep him in.
In the land development regulations. I've got a lot of history in this, and not to kind of bore you with the history, but to me, the history's interesting. The way all of this came about way back in the year 2000, it really started in, in about the year 2000, we had, um, the University of South Florida School of Architecture wanted to use St. Pete Beach as an example of how you would potentially develop barry railings in Florida. And so, um, we encouraged that. The students did some great planning studies, as students do, they did some kind of crazy things, but we had a lot of public meetings, there were hundreds of public meetings attended by residents, business owners, everybody. Um, and it really got the city to take a look at not just today's issues, but where do we want to be five, 10, 20 years into the future? And then from that, we decided we really, beyond the student effort, we really need to take a close look at it. And the city commission at that time hired a great planning firm called Gladding Jackson. Uh, Gladding Jackson, it was a very robust team that had economists as part of that study, so it wasn't just planners, but their economists. At that time, if, for those of you who are here in the, in the, like, 2000s, early 2000s, all around Florida, they were tearing down hotels and building condos. And that was happening potentially in St. Pete Beach, but we really kind of got ahead of it. And, um, I knew a lot of different hoteliers at that time that were saying, they were unsolicited, they had developers come and knock on their door, saying, "I want to buy your hotel." Their whole idea was to tear it down, build condos, sell the condos, and leave town. And it happened all over the place. Happened a lot in southeast Florida, around the Miami area.
I remember back then that the comments were made that, "Oh, well, I've got all these local families own these hotels."
Yeah.
You know, we had the La Cantas, the Renfro's, the Fortunes.
And a lot of those held off because of our ideas.
Yeah.
So what the, what the economist said at that time was that our plans were imbalanced, imbalanced in terms of allowance of condominiums towards hotels. At that time, if I remember right, it was 15 units per acre for condos, and it was...
Eighteen, eighteen and thirty.
Or eighteen and thirty. And, um, so what they said was that if you want to retain hotels in St. Pete Beach, which hotels do support the local economy, um, I know I've got a unit at the, besides my house, I have a unit at the Lido condominium, we have 72 units there, and there are less than 20 people that live there full-time. And that's probably pretty typical for condominiums in, in, in St. Pete Beach and in Florida. So we have some people where they're Canadians and they spend only two to four weeks a year here. So, I mean, they're not going to any of the restaurants, not going to retail, not going to Publix. And so if you talk to any businesses, especially restaurants, but retailers too, they really, their formula to be good here in St. Pete Beach and, and other places like St. Pete Beach are, they cater to the residents, and they cater to the tourists, and they know the cycles that we go through, and they know September's the slowest month out of the year. So anyway, that all led to the revised comprehensive plan, which then allowed hotels to have a little bit more density, a little bit more heist. That got into a lot of discussions. We had hundreds of meetings, lawsuits, elections, all kinds of stuff. And it finally came to that settlement agreement, the infamous settlement agreement in 2015.
Fourteen.
No, I think it was fifteen.
I think it was fourteen.
Fifteen, fifteen. 2015.
Okay.
And that was one that Andrew sent us recently, so we all have a, you know, a fresh copy of it. So, um, I mean, I'm open to going through that process again, but, you know, it's gonna take a process, I think, where we get a good group, we'd have to go through an RFP process, we'd have to get a really good land planner, I think we would write it, set their economists as part of that, and they would take a look at, okay, have things changed? Yeah. Prices have gone up like crazy, but prices have gone up both on the residential side and on the hotel side. So we would go through that process and see if, you know, where we want to be.
Where you probably remember this. I thought it was about the coastal control line shifting, and so, did it make what was currently on the ground non-conforming to density?
A good example.
Yeah, that was... When the, when the coastal control line shifts, um, our complaint on land development code says that you're not entitled to any units on a per acre basis on anything that's west of the CCL, right? So, yeah, so it was a lot of...
So one of the reasons to do the comprehensive plan and to look at that as well was that if, um, you know, they, that, you know, when they're looking at adding units, it's, it's, um, it's...
A smaller footprint.
...allowable rather than what's actually on the ground right now.
I, I know for a fact, when that happened, the, uh, the Renfro's that owned the Alden were built at 30 units an acre, but with the new coastal construction control line, they were at 47. They stopped insuring one of the buildings, because they said, "I can't rebuild it."
Yeah.
And, you know, the whole idea about us wanting to maintain the hotels, and, you know, people saying, "Ah, they're all family-owned," well, guess what? It must have worked, because in retrospect, then with the plan we now have, all those hotels have been purchased, and there isn't a single one of the people that bought them that's trying to make them into condos. I think it worked.
Right.
Okay, but needs to be looked at again.
But again, I think you're right. I think we're, going through the process that we went through before, when we tackle something this significant, and I do think that our comprehensive plan could use some tweaking. I think it's, uh, all encompassing. They developed land development regulations, incorporated into our comprehensive plan just to give it more meat, but I think that we could simplify it and make it easier for people to understand. I think, um, that would be healthy. But again, having professionals help us guide that, um, I think would, is probably the best process. And I think it would make, you know, it would, like, we're all basing all of our information on, you know, all the information that we, like, sucked in 20 years ago. You know, these guys have just moved here, like, a lot of them, or they, you know, kind of like, they want to revisit it and circle back, you know, and do whatever, you know, to, to the comprehensive plan, and, you know, it's gonna cost a lot of money. Like, I don't know how much it costs, but I would think that revising and going through and, and reviewing the comprehensive plan is, is a fairly significant investment, and I would guesstimate it would be in around $300,000.
Yeah.
Yeah, a couple queer observations, if I could. I mean, the, the statutes that, um, control your, your comprehensive planning are your minimum requirements, and Alex is correct, I mean, you can tackle this job at any time, you don't have to do it every seven years, it's just the minimum requirement is that the state requires, hey, you gotta look at it every seven years. So this, this particular item that you're looking at is really just to clean up and deal with some of the new items that have come into play, like, for example, property rights is a new element that's been added to it. They, they suggest some language that you could use, but you could use your own language. So a lot of, you have to remember that, you know, it's the minimum requirements, and local governments can go further and do more planning and do other things. The other thing is that your planning board, um, is your, your statutorily designated local planning agency. You have, every local government has to have some, some, uh, official body that is responsible for having these public hearings whenever you're gonna amend your comprehensive plan or do anything with it. And so your planning board is that body. It doesn't mean you can't, you know, set up any, but you would, no matter what happens with your comprehensive, comprehensive plan, it's gonna have to go through that, that organization. And then finally, um, yeah, yes, looking at your comprehensive plan is a big undertaking, and anything you do with it has to be supported by dat, like, data and analysis. But in addition to that, if changes are made to your comprehensive plan that would cause your land development regulations to be inconsistent with your comprehensive plan, you also have to take it to that level. So whatever, and of course, you know, as a former planner that went to law school and became a, you know, land use attorney, you know, I, I think it's worth the money, you know, you have to look at that and look at it carefully, and a lot of public participation, but it's not just your plan, you have to look also at your land development regulations that implement your plan. So if you're gonna mod, if at the end of the day modifications are made, whether it's to intensities or densities or whatever, then you have to look at your land development regulations, and all of those are done by ordinances too. So it is a big job, but it's also an important job, um, and, and worth doing, and you don't have to do it every seven years, you could do it more frequently.
Well, and the thing is, in adding to that, not only is it, does it affect the land development code, but are, what are the unintended consequences of making a comprehensive land plan that impacts the, the allowable property rights currently, and what does that set us up for as well? So, you know, there's a lot of moving parts, and that's why I think, you know, the motion on the table, when they were suggesting in the form letter, that I, I think we got every, a few, you know, modifications possibly to, uh, form letters, it was like they were asking for those three things. And I think they hit the pause button is one of those, like, never underestimate the unintended consequences of what sounds really good at the mic that doesn't really play out in real life, um, you know, uh, you know, situation. So I wouldn't be, I, you know, I don't mind, you know, allocating funds for things that are really good, but not for cases that we can't win. And, um, putting ourselves into a liable situation, I'll, you know, that's just, um, not something I feel comfortable with. And, uh, so I think that, um, let's make a motion on that. But I, I, we heard you, we heard you loud and clear, so, so I wonder about that.
I just wanted to make one other comment too about, um...
You're next.
Intensity to storms, only because that was brought up. Um, the destruction that you saw down south was primarily due to buildings that were older than 20 years old. The Florida Building Code was instituted in 2020. And so, uh, the Florida Building Code, and they changed the codes based on, the Florida Building Code was based after Andrew. Andrew hit in 1992. Um, it took 10 years to, for us to develop our own code. Prior to that, we had the standard building code. And, um, and so, uh, you've already seen some news reports of, of buildings that did well through that storm, and others that were totally demolished. And, you know, these things keep on changing. That last FEMA map that we got, where we got some good news and bad news, uh, my house went from not requiring piles to be requiring piles.
Really?
And that was because they looked at the amount of, uh, potential storm surge coming, because you saw some buildings that actually got, the building didn't get hurt, it just moved. It's not a good thing for buildings, and I meant to do that.
See some of the older ones where all you've got left is the, is the pilings, and the house has gone.
So that was the result of that, and, like, we sort of saw that loud and clear, unfortunately.
Commissioner Grill, you got us hot. I had a question for the, um, the city attorney, actually two items. So for the, for the city attorney is, if you could give us a quick overview or update on, on your views, if, if, as the request was to hit the pause button tonight, what is the downside? What, what, is that a possible thing, or are we opening ourselves up to the Burt Harris Law?
There's, it is complicated. I mean, hard to, you ha, you have to do planning. Planning's important in order for you to know where you're gonna go, and you, usually planning horizons are anywhere between 20 and 40 years. So if you were to say, okay, let's, let's, um, let's do a very comprehensive study of our comprehensive plan, and where are we going, and let's include the future land use element and intensities and densities, um, you would almost certainly get, i- if you don't consider some type of moratorium, and I know you've used pause as another word for moratorium, or zoning in progress, or planning in progress, if you don't consider a, a step like that, like some kind of temporary moratorium, then what you're gonna get is a big run to City Hall with just any kind of plans, just to get vested rights. Now, it can be done, I mean, it's legal to institute moratoriums for specific things, and there's specific laws about it, I'm not, I'm gonna talk generally about it, I'm not gonna give you any specific yes or no, but, you know, communities all over the country, Florida, do this type of planning, and they realize that, oh, you know, we don't want everyone running in to get into the barnyard doors, uh, to get into the pipeline, which would defeat the whole point of having an evaluation of our intensities and densities. So you, you could do that. Now, what, if, as the process goes along, and it looks like, well, we're gonna downplan somebody, and that's a general term for maybe reducing intensity or density, and someone's going to be affected by it, there's a state statute, the Burt J. Harris Act, that would basically say, "You're, you're affecting our property rights, uh, and I'm gonna file a Burt J. Harris Act, you could be dealing with that." A lot of communities just understand that you're gonna get those kind of lawsuits, and we'll just have to deal with them as we go through it. Some of them get worked out, some of them don't, but, um, you know, that, that particular act, the Burt J. Harris Act, in effect, has also, you know, been characterized as kind of a chilling effect on planning, meaning that cities are scared to plan, because they don't want to be sued for, um, just situations like this, like, oh my gosh, we've seen, you know, Fort, Fort Myers Beach just get wiped off the map almost, and now we gotta rethink our plans, and then the people that are on the beach are, "Well, wait a minute, I've got property rights, I'm gonna file this." And it, some, it happens, and so, a lot of local governments look at it like, well, we'll deal with the Burt Harris Act suits as they come in, because there are, there's a lot of mediation involved with them. And in other communities say, "We don't wanna, we don't want to even expose ourselves to any type of liability, so we're not gonna really evaluate our plans. You know, we're just gonna kind of creep along and, and do small things as we go along." So it's, it's a balancing act. There's no easy answer here at all. You guys are in a very difficult position, because, you know, there are, there's gonna be gains and pains, you know, through the, that process. But you can't just, um, at the snap of a finger, hit the pause button, per se, and I don't think Mr. Gutierrez, Charlie Gutierrez, meant that, like, he knows this, you know, when he wrote that letter, he knows that, and he's speaking as a planner, but you, legally, you would have to adopt, um, some type of, uh, legislation or, or resolution, essentially having a moratorium on, on taking in applications, um, to keep people from running into City Hall with plans to try to get vested, and you would have to deal with that. You would have to deal with the ramifications of that. It's complicated, but it's not impossible.
Well, and it's also taking consideration, some assumption that what our comprehensive plan currently allows is not thoughtful, responsible redevelopment, and I don't know that, that anybody has said that. So we're, it's a pretty drastic measure when it's under an assumption that I don't think is possibly, as maybe we need to have a workshop on, on what a comprehensive plan actually says, so that people can learn, you know, um, about it, and as well as we can be refreshed on it before we make that commitment with a, um, with revisiting the comprehensive plan. And so when I was seeing pause, and, which I obviously knew that was moratorium, I just thought, it sounds, sounds better, you know, saying pause, you know, I'm just sitting there going, on the assumption of what? That it, we really don't have a thoughtful plan? You know, maybe once everybody learns of it, they'll find it is very thoughtful. And if they don't, and it's an assimilation of lots, or that's the issue, then let's tweak that, you know? So if there's an issue within the comprehensive plan that is creating something that is very distasteful, let's address that. And we also understand to the full knowledge of what our concurrency criteria is on that, that plan. So to me, it just seems like, you know, saying it now, or looking at that pause now, I think we, I would rather have us have a, a real good workshop on, on what our plan is.
Yeah, and to that point, I, you do need to, and we, you guys have done some moratoriums in the past for very specific reasons, and you, you said, okay, we've got an issue, we've gotta do a moratorium. And so if you were just to adopt, you say, look, like, we, let's do an RFP or RFQ for a planning firm, and then right now, let's pass a moratorium, that would, to me, be very arbitrary, instead of if you had someone that really came to you and said, "Well, here are the things that I think you guys need to look at, you may have some issues here." Um, you know, it could be the, the impervious surface issue or so, something, you know, something that would be, uh, okay, well, now we need to initiate this, this full-on, you know, procedure, so that when you adopt something, let's say it's a resolution for a moratorium, which would be the pause, it would spell out what the, um, what the timeframe of that pause would be, so there would be some type of certainty for property owners who may or may not be affected by it. And in this case, you know, we, I don't know what, you know, I know that the discussion is focused on resorts, but it could broaden into a larger area, I don't know. But I, I would ask, I, I would recommend that you have some specificity in any type of resolution that you pass, um, instituting some type of moratorium, that there'd be some, some detail to it, not just, like, let's have a moratorium and start looking for a planning firm. That, that wouldn't be recommended.
It's just that, like, you know, if we decide to do a moratorium on residential, you know, you know, I think that everybody would be pretty upset about it. Well, but it's okay if we're looking at doing a moratorium on, you know, something else. So, you know, I think it's keeping it in perspective, that's our responsibilities, and...
Okay, well, let's continue on with the subject at hand, then. We, uh, comprehensive plan, that's finishing up the documentation for keeping us in line with state law.
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve professional planning services from Kimble Horn and Associates in the amount of $42,008.
We got a second?
Second.
A motion and a second? Did, uh, you need any audience comments for this one, I believe? Or, no, did we use them up earlier? I want to make sure everybody's spoken. Okay, uh, then can we have a roll call vote, please, city clerk?
Hi, it's Mayor Grouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Grill?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazlowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Plecher?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
So, at the same time, on this other item we've been discussing, should we, I know we won't be making a resolution, but do we start activity along that path? I'm not saying go out and hire a firm or tomorrow, or put a, you know, put a, the RFP tomorrow, but do we start this, this discussion? Do we get the planning board involved? Do we get staff involved and, and start this discussion? And start this, this activity?
Maybe the first thing to do would be to have a, a commission workshop.
I think that'd be the thing, commission workshop, and I wonder if we can get planning board here.
That's what I was gonna ask about, that you can have a joint, I think it'd be good to have a joint meeting, because this directly involves the planning board.
Yeah, we need planning board.
Start moving my, my second half.
Yeah.
Well, the thing is, and let's face it, I mean, those are the folks that are, you know, that are a part of the community, so, you know, bring that transparency, you know, in case they don't watch the meetings, you know, to see, you know, to let everybody, you know, lunch and learn together.
Okay, let's see if we can get that, uh... Okay, let's see if we can get that organized.
And if I may, Ms. Mayor, just want to make a statement on on behalf of staff because it seems like we're getting very personal on this. We are guided by the rules that are set by the by the commission. The ComPlan was adopted by the city commission and when we are reviewing any application from a developer, we are reviewing that in consistency with the comprehensive plan. Okay? We're not encouraging anybody to submit amendments to the plan and and changes to the plan. Imagine how this meeting would have happened if, because of the level of distrust that exists today, if staff would have been coming and saying, we want to revisit in high intensity and density. Okay? That meeting would have probably been assuming that we were trying to do that just so we can benefit a specific developer. Okay? So the reason we stayed away from from dealing with that issue is because we know how sensitive it is. We know, and I wasn't here, but I've been told about how emotionally tiring and exhausting this process was for the community. You are going to have people with very different opinions and and the like and it's emotional, but we all need to really go through this process with understanding that everybody wants the best for the community. Now, what best for the community might be slightly different, you know, than for you and for you and for you and 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 all of the decision makers, but everybody's trying to do what's right then. And anything all the staff is doing is following the rules that were adopted in 2015 by the people that were here. It's not specific agenda from staff or whether we want this development or that development. The developers are coming in and they're submitting their plans, we're reacting to that, it's not us guiding the what they're trying to do. So I just want to make sure that the temperature just is to drop down a little bit and if we're going to go through this process, let's do it with with an open understanding that everybody's trying to do what they think is best for the city. So I just wanted to say that.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't know how many people were here back then, but it was, there was a tremendous divide in the city and this was before social media.
Yeah. Imagine how bad it would get now.
It was neighbor against neighbor, there was signs, there was this, there was that. And we didn't have, you know, we didn't have whatever the neighborhood today or.
Yeah, next door and everything else.
Well, and there was misinformation on both sides.
Yeah, yeah, and which, yeah, which typically is. So, I mean, I appreciate the city manager saying that because a couple of things come to mind. One is the old shoot the messenger, so when they don't like the messenger, they try and shoot the messenger. Unfortunately, you're the messenger and you and the staff are. The other thing is it's sort of a perfect storm. I mean, when you think back, we had the economic issues of 2008, people were really doing anything at that time. People assume because tourism is doing great right now, it's always doing great, it's not always doing great. There are plenty of times when hotels were hurting here. I remember talking with Bill Carrata at the at the Bon Air for all the years, I was pretty close to Bill, and he reminded me of the times in the 70s when they barely were making it. So it's good times right now, but it's not always that way. We've had economic issues where the hotels haven't done good, we've had red tide issues where the hotels haven't done good. We were at a moratorium because of the sewer system, so nothing was happening around here, so it was a moratorium, it was economic times. And now it just so happened to coincide that we have spent a lot of money on on infrastructure and the economy up until maybe just more recently is doing good, but the hotels are doing good. And who would have known during COVID, they'd be doing extra good. So it's sort of the perfect storm that's hit. And now there are more development pressures, which there haven't been for a long time. So here we are, we gotta deal with today's issues, so.
Okay.
But I don't, I think it's unfair for it to be the staff looked at trying to drive these issues or, you know, anything like that, which is unfortunate if that's happening from anybody, yeah.
On social media, it is.
Yeah.
Messaging, you know, those things just sound really good, but they're.
It's always easy to find somebody to blame anyway. Okay, let's continue on then.